So on the, well, on the agenda it says, "Call to order and pledge of allegiance."
Yep.
So, the agenda needs to be correct. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we've got to reverse that. Roll call, please.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Secretary.
Okay, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alimo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Hooper.
Here.
And Walter Crizell.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, at this time I would like to appoint Vice Chairman Lynch to be Chair for this evening's meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and also for the record, I did watch the last meeting in its entirety. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Fire evacuation. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, and walk down one flight of stairs and out of the building. Or, the door to the rear of these chambers. In either case, once out of the building, walk a safe distance away from the building. Okay, we did the roll call, so we got the approval of minutes from February 8th.
I make a motion to approve February 8th minutes.
Second.
Any conversation, any questions? Okay, Linda?
Um, page three, last paragraph. Um, I think we need to take the word "not" off of that first sentence because it makes it sound more non-conforming. Well, I really was asking for it to be more conforming. So, that's it.
Good. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
vote unanimous. Next item we might have here. Town Attorney's report, there's nothing there. Zoning Enforcement Officers' report. We have public participation. Anybody that might want to speak before this body is able to come up now and speak, as long as it's not about anything that's on our agenda. Seeing no hands, hearing nothing, move on again. Bond releases. We have one that was put on the desk in front of us tonight for the Golden Nozzle car wash.
Mr. Chairman, if you would please just take a vote to add it to the agenda as an item, because it wasn't on the agenda.
I want to suspend the rules and add this item to our agenda under number eight, bond releases.
So move, or second.
Okay. Any question or concerns about doing that? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So entertain a motion to approve the bond release of Golden Nozzle.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $4,500 and the pavement bond in the amount of $28,100 for the project SPR number 1872, located at 109 Elm Street and Pandolfo, uh, to Pandolfo Company, Inc.
Second.
Second.
Are we approving the landscaping bond release too?
Yes, both were in the motion.
Yes. Oh, well, also is part of the $4,500, or?
No, the motion is for the $4,500 of landscaping, or, I'm sorry, E and S bond and the pavement bond in the amount of $28,100.
We don't need to spell out the landscaping bond as well?
The landscaping bond isn't being re-.
It is not being.
Is not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry for the question.
Any other comments from the staff while we're talking about this?
No, this is actually, um, this actually got kind of put on the wayside. It should have been done a few months ago.
Any other questions?
Kind of got lost in the shuffle.
All those in favor of releasing the bond?
Aye.
Aye. But unanimous. Okay, next thing we have on the agenda. We don't need any authorization for administrative approvals.
Not this evening.
Any report from the Director of Planning?
Um, yeah, um, I don't want any answers this evening, but I'm going to be asking you all to decide what you need in paper form. So, do you need the application, or can you just look at that online? We're way over budget on our paper, so we're going to have to try to figure out some ways to cut down on that. So, I mean, we usually give you executive summaries of like the drainage report or the traffic report. We give you the application, which is usually four pages, but you could pretty easily read that on, you know, the website. Obviously, we will always give you a full paper copy of the plans and the staff report. But we're just trying to figure out what you really need. And again, I don't need answers this evening, just kind of think about it, and we'll have a conversation about that in the near future.
Why don't we plan to discuss that at the next meeting, and then it'll give you a place to go, and we can put that even on the agenda for the next meeting for, you know, a discussion.
That sounds like a great idea. I will make note of that.
Any other comments or questions? Frank, you still awake down there?
I'm here.
Okay, just checking. I didn't know whether you were asleep yet.
So, I want to remind all of the Commissioners, so some of you are new and some of you are not, I believe that all of the Commissioners that were appointed prior to January or November, December of '23 have taken all the required training. Joe, you did, I'm not sure if you did any of it, but because you came in pretty late in the year, so.
I watched a couple.
Yeah, okay, so, but.
I did watch a couple.
We have a new year now, so all of you are going to be responsible for taking the four credits of land use training for this year of '24. So, we'll be in touch with that again. There's some training opportunities that are coming up that I just got an email about, so I'm going to send that out to you. And for those of you who are newer, I'll talk to you directly about that. Just want you to know that All Sports Village, which is 100 Bright Meadow Boulevard, that came in for wetlands. It was received last week, and it will be at a public hearing on March 5th. So, we could anticipate probably within the next month or so having an application before this commission. And on a sad note, my colleague next to me has decided to take a job closer to his home, which I totally understand, but I just, um, so unfortunately, Matt's going to be leaving us. This will be his last meeting here. He's been fabulous to work with, and I've learned a lot from him.
Thank you.
And sad to see him go, but I understand an hour and 15 minutes versus 15-minute commute is a big difference. So.
Yeah, but look at all the fun he misses, you know?
I keep telling him that.
I will miss the fun. I will, absolutely will. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And in all sincerity, I will miss working with the staff here. We do try to make things fun, and it helps get us through the difficult days and the chaos and et cetera. But the commute was hard to pass up, you know?
Yeah, so, so that's all I have for this evening.
Yeah, go ahead.
I always say to everyone, you've got to worry about number one, and you're number one, so congratulations and my short, my short time knowing you, but thank you very much.
That's the important part, the life's happening.
Exactly. I've been doing it for 30 years, I know that.
Uh, Frank?
Frank?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, Matt, congratulations. It was a pleasure working with you. Wish you all the luck in your new job. And gas prices today is, I could see a nice little raise there as well. So, good luck, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And a question, a question for Lori, two questions, actually. On the training, I had asked you, which spoke about getting some kind of certificate or response of attendance when we do it. Did you find anything out about that?
Yeah, for the most part, they're just not doing it. I think some organizations are starting to try, but they're not offering, so it's basically just, you know, the honor system at this point. I know you took your classes, and you're good, so.
Yeah, you're right. Something is such important, you would think that we can get a note that, you know, which members completed and which didn't, so we can have it for the file, but.
I agree. It would be helpful for me as well. But, um, yeah, but we'll talk more about that as I get some more training facilities or opportunities to come up.
Okay. Any other question? I know we had some discussions relative to the issues going on with Artioli Dodge. Were you able to find anything else out about that? And I know we had them before us recently, and I guess they're looking for a temporary CO. Can you give us an update?
Oh, they just made application yesterday for, which we'll be receiving tonight, for phasing of the remaining work to be done. So, we'll have to review it for the phasing. We have not spoken to building to see what, if any, you know, what will be required for them to move back into the building temporarily, but they're proposing.
Yeah, because it would fall with the building department, right? They would make the decision relative to safety.
Hey, I mean, if they couldn't move in because of building, it would be senseless to do the phasing, but we're going to move forward with it, and we'll receive it this evening, and we'll find out more as we research it.
Great, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
All set, Frank?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken. Uh, yeah, Matt, just like to thank you for all you did for us. You did a great job. A pleasure working with you, and wish you good luck in your future endeavors, and can't beat the great commute, all right?
Yeah, 15 minutes is kind of nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, when is, Matt, when is your official last day?
Uh, actually, it's going to be next Friday.
Okay.
Monday following.
And as everybody else said, certainly enjoyed working with you over the past several years, and certainly remember you from back in your previous stand here, but.
Our second, go right.
Right, so certainly, certainly going to miss you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you for coming.
Go ahead, Linda.
Just want to wish you the best. I'm going to miss you. Who am I going to call when Lori's not there?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to take any good time, we can talk later, but the family's back in Eastern Connecticut. My mom is, she's 93, so we'll be closer to her. My wife's parents are also getting elderly, so we'll be closer to them. But we just, so we kind of accelerated the timeframe a little bit, and the real estate market was so bizarre, frankly, that we weren't sure that anything was going to happen as quick as it did, and we found a place that we fell in love with, and, you know, so here we are.
Well, good luck and congratulations for finding your happy home.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Just for myself, I don't know you that well, Matt, we've only met a few times, but they were good meetings. I learned a lot, and I continue to. So, good luck to you, and make sure that you stay in touch.
If you're ever over by the casino, let me know.
Does that mean you're going to pay my way, or what? I mean, I'm just wondering what that was. Huh? With all the gas money you're saving, we can.
Well, like I fool, I went out and bought a big truck, so now it's going to be a wash, I think.
All right, well, good luck to you anyway, but.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay. Next, correspondence, outside correspondence. We went through everything we had. Anybody have anything? Oh, not hearing any. You got anything, Frank? You're outside, you got any correspondence?
No, I got something for Commissioners' correspondence at the next.
Okay.
Hide on.
Well, let's do that right now, then.
Anybody else can go before me if they have anything?
You said you had something, so you might as well start.
I do. Okay, so this isn't by no way to infringe on anybody's First Amendment rights of freedom to speak, disrespecting anybody, or any of that, but I just want to throw up a yellow flag here. At the last council meeting, I watched the meeting, and one of our members went up to address the council specifically on issues that are, have to do with planning and zoning. And the member, you know, used the cliche or the phrase, you know, "I'm going to take off my hat, and I'm going to talk to you as a citizen, I'm not going to talk to you as a member." I don't think that flies, taking off the hat, because you can't unappoint yourself, and I don't think anybody can unelect yourself. So, I would like to take this opportunity as, using this as maybe a teaching or a training issue, and maybe we can get, actually get some training time. We just had a training seminar over in the last year with our town attorney. So, I think that it's important that we, you know, we be careful, be careful what we say. I don't think, you know, people like to use that, "I'm going to take my hat off for now, and I'm going to say something," and put it back on. Now, my experience, being a public official for many years, and tending seminars, and obviously, on training, you can see on your town email, Shipman &amp; Goodman still offers training, and that's, you know, who we used to go to, and we get a lot of information on municipal government issues. So, that's an opportunity, maybe that can count towards training as well. But anyway, when I get back, I think I'd like to run this by the town manager, or town attorney's office, or whatever avenue I have to take, and see if, you know, this could be addressed. And maybe we can do a, I like to resolve these things as, you know, you saying it's training or retraining. I think we have to be very, very careful, and obviously, everybody's entitled to their personal opinion, your feelings, but we don't want to have, you know, a possible member of the commission to be barred from sitting on an application because the commissioner gave their personal opinions on specific issues to have to do with something that could come before us. So, again, I don't, you know, from what I understand, you can't unappoint yourself and then put your citizen hat on when you're speaking directly to issues. So, again, not to belabor this, I think that it's an opportunity for training or retraining, and I'd like to address that for all of us, you know, for all of us as a group, that we don't, we don't make a mistake. And we, and then again, we have to keep a very, very fine line, a very hard line between council and planning and zoning, because they appoint us, and they're elected, but we're appointed, so we can't mix the two. And I'm very, I just want to make sure, because, you know, like Lori just said, we have a big, you know, application coming soon. We have, you know, it's out there, rumors about the mall's been sold, we may be seeing that, so, you know, before we get these big, big projects in front of us, I would like to see if we can, you know, get some training on this and make sure that, you know, we're in the right course here. And again, this is not to embarrass or any of that stuff, any of the members are, you know, take away, say you can have the right to speak, you do have the right to your opinion. I respect everybody's opinion, but I just, just want to be ultimately careful with these kind of things. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any comments or concerns? Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I'll happily self-identify myself as that Commissioner. I did, I did present myself in public participation to town council on town council matters. It, it was a subject that I brought up here in different lights with regards to parking. And, you know, we talk about here, you know, parking with regards to applications and with regard to regulation, right? So, what I brought up to town council, and feel free to, you know, go watch that, that recording, was, was I believe, you know, I think we can, I'm happy to get clarification on it, when I believe completely outside our jurisdiction, completely within the jurisdiction of the town council with regards to the spending of town money, taxpayer dollar, as well as, as well as how the, how the town is run. And what I did recommend to town council, from my own personal opinion, again, outside of our authority, is that I do believe that our town should start considering parking authority or parking management from municipal level, which would, again, fall outside our domain from Planning and Zoning Commission, at least as far as I know. But, you know, like I said, you know, I'm willing to learn more. If that was an overstep, you know, I'm happy to talk about it. I do think that, you know, we all should find our place in the community where we should, you know, where we can be both citizens who want to, you know, bring concerns to mind, as well as, you know, of course, we're here in an official capacity as well. So, thanks for bringing that up, Frank, and yeah, I'm happy, I say, you know, whatever we can, you know, to try to make sure we're all on the same page, and, you know, I just want to address the elephant in the room, so, you know, thanks, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner D'Antonio, I respect you for self-identifying, as you called it. Again, I respect your feelings, and I think that was very highly of you to say that it was you. I didn't want to call anybody out or embarrass anybody, or, that's not my intention here. My intention here is to protect us as a commission, and we've had these issues come up before not that long ago, so if we can get some training on it, I know when we did the training with the town attorney a year or so ago, it was very helpful and informative. But maybe we do a session like that, and we can count it towards our hours of training, or whatever, you know, the town attorney's office recommends. But I always like to take something like this and turn it into a training or retraining situation, so it benefits all of us. And again, Commissioner D'Antonio, no disrespect to you whatsoever. Just as chairman, well, I'm not chairman tonight, but I feel I need to, you know, again, throw this flag up. I mean, and so it's like, if you went and talked to an applicant that's coming before us tonight, you went to talk to them this afternoon about their application, but you say, "Well, I took my planning and zoning hat off, and now I'm a citizen." I don't know if that flies. I don't know if you can do that. So, and I don't know, but we need to find out. So, that's it, and again, I appreciate you stepping up. I think that was very nice of you, and again, no disrespect, and I appreciate all your input that you give us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else? Moving on.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I just respond quickly? Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think we all know that there is a difference between addressing town council, which are our citizen representation and applicants. So, I hear you, Frank, and I agree with you. I think we can all educate ourselves and make sure we're all on the same page. I'm not sure that's a comparable example. I don't think that's particularly fair to compare it in that light.
Just an example, if that should happen, you know, the taking off the hat thing in municipal government, I don't think flies. I don't think it does, but I could be wrong.
Okay, well, I think we've beat that one around a little bit, so.
I appreciate your interest, thank you.
We can, if we can get the town attorney or someone, you know, at another meeting and talk about it, it'd be okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is continued public hearings, which we don't have any of. The next item on the agenda is this, tonight's public hearings, there were two on the agenda. Public hearing 3088ZA was tabled, so we will cut to that one whenever the.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the, this has been requested to be tabled to the March, I think it's, I just, my computer just went off.
Okay.
I think it was March 14th.
The next meeting is March 14th.
Yeah.
Do we make a motion to do that, or?
It's, just accept the request.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing 3089. Mr. Secretary.
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, February 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing number 3089, 558 and 566 Enfield Street, application for special use permit for parking improvements per Section 9 and 9.10.7, American Legion Post number 80 applicant. Town of Enfield and TM Realty owner, map 33 lot 001 and 002 R33 and BL44 Zones.
Good evening. For the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with J.R. Russo and Associates, office at One Show Ham Road in East Windsor. With me tonight, Richard Gorman from the American Legion. We're here tonight because American Legion wants to make improvements to their existing parking areas. Their, their property is located at 566 Enfield Street, which is a little over a half-acre parcel on the west side of Enfield Street, and the, the building is a, is a use where they have events come in, and based on their seating capacity, they need about 86 parking spaces. On a little over half-acre site, there is not room for that many. They right now have 35 paved parking spaces, and some of those are actually located on the adjacent properties. The property is surrounded, is surrounded basically by a much larger 31-acre parcel owned by the Town of Enfield. The property has a pump station, a sewer pump station in the back. The town uses the property for that purpose, for the pump station, but the American Legion and Town have had an agreement, a long-term agreement, allows them to expand their use into the, into the town property. So, there's existing pavement over the property line here on the southern side of the property. The access drive goes into the town's property, and, and so what they do when, when they have larger events and they can't, and the 35 spaces are not enough, they begin parking on the grass area here behind the paved parking. And so, over time, what they found is that when it rains and it's wet, it gets, it gets muddy, and, and it's just not very efficient for, for their patrons, those that are their guests who are coming for, for events. So, they reached out to the town to see what could be done, and they are, I think, going to be working with, with Public Works to some extent to pave this with asphalt millings. So, not, not a hot mix asphalt, but recycled asphalt that's then reapplied and compacted, and, and it creates basically an asphalt service, but it's, it's rougher, it's a looser material, and so you can stripe it, which we're going to do. One of their staff's concerns, they want to make sure that we striped it, so we will stripe it. Obviously, that kind of surface tends to wear off more quickly, obviously, than a regular pavement, so it'll have to be reapplied, and we've, we've noted that in our, in our maintenance, maintenance schedule for, that it has to be, the paint has to be reapplied. But basically, we're, we're paving this area, this area that's currently a grass parking area, and going to be using it this, this, this new surface, and we're expanding it just a bit on the north and west boundaries. There's a little bit of vegetation that's going to be removed, just to square it off, because right now it's sort of a oblong shape, and so by squaring it off, we can have an efficient layout, and actually provide enough parking spaces between the two parcels to meet the zoning regulations for required parking. Regulations require 86, we'll have 92 spaces. By adding those spaces now, we need more accessible parking spaces as well, so we're adding two accessible parking spaces up, up near the building. So, so that's, I think, the, the main gist of it. The, we'd mentioned, we did apply to ZBA for some variances that allow us to pave over property lines, that allow us to not have landscape islands in the center for this type of a, this type of use. Landscape islands aren't very efficient, and, and impervious coverage of the, of this parcel, which by expanding, there's, there's more impervious coverage, so. But we've, we've evaluated the drainage impacts of this, it's been reviewed by your town engineer, and he concurs it's not an issue. So, the water's just going to sheet, sheet flow off of here, and it heads towards Great Brook, which is, runs through the town's property on the southern. which is, runs through the town's property on the southern boundary. So I think that's all, all I need to say. If you have any questions about the operation, Rich, Richard can answer those for you, or if you have questions about the plan, the design we're proposing, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Staff, any comments about this before we open it up to ourselves for questions here?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. John Kibble did comment on this on the 20th, and he said, since the site, the assistant town engineer, since the site is in the lower third of the Great Brook watershed, detention is not recommended for the increased impervious area. So basically, he had no concerns.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have one question regarding site-specific conditions. I see none. So usually that's something that the assistant town engineer might have.
Second page. Those two is missing on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing any site-specific conditions.
I did, there were none recommended from staff.
Okay. And those are the only comments that the engineer had, what you just, were you just...
Yes, he's the only one that had not commented.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I add one more thing?
Sure.
So this, this is a special permit, correct? So just wanted to make note about traffic and buffers and that, and that sort of thing as it relates to a special permit application. The parking area is surrounded by wooded vegetation, so it's just some natural buffers around the residential properties. There are residences to the north, as you can see on the plan there, but there's a good buffer between them that's going to be maintained. In regard to traffic, we're really not expanding much, maybe, and we're squaring it off, so maybe, maybe we're getting a few more spaces than, than, than they were before. But in terms of traffics, it's not really, we're not bringing more traffic to the site, we're just better serving the traffic that's already coming to the site. So I really don't think this is going to have any impact on the neighborhood, or I think it's just going to make it safer and better to have a harder surface to park on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go through the chair to the staff. I think staff would be best suited. If they had gone with gravel payment, which I'll ask if they considered, would a gravel parking area, that still doesn't count as pervious, is that correct?
So gravel can be, it's, it's basically a coefficient. So gravel would be pervious, but only partially. So the more it gets packed down, the more impervious it gets. The millings is pervious as well, but once it gets packed down, you got a higher, is it a higher or lower coefficient?
Higher.
Higher. So a higher coefficient of imperviousness. So, and the, so the millings, at least you could pack it down and stripe it, where the gravel will probably get smushed into the ground, and you really can't stripe it.
Okay. So from your opinion, you don't feel like there would be much benefit as, with regards to perviousness of...
No, this is actually on town property that's just, I don't know, many, many, a lot of acres, and it's basically just all wetlands in the back. So, I mean, we actually want it to just, you know, sheet flow off and drain away.
Great, thanks for sharing.
Yes, thank you.
Any other question? Is there anyone that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, hearing none. entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, would you call a rule? Or do we need to call a rule, or can we do it by hand?
By hand.
Sure.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Public hearing is closed. I think the vote was unanimous. Frank is still awake with us, so we're okay. All right, public hearing is closed. Now, let's, can we have a motion to approve the application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3089 with conditions and modifications. Public hearing 3089, 558 and 566, Enfield Street, application for special use permit for parking improvements per section nine and 9.10.7. American Legion Post 80 applicant, Town of Enfield and TM Realty owner, map 33 lot 001 and 002, R33 and BL44 zones, with the following 21 conditions listed.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call for this one, I believe?
Yes. Francis Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Alinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under old business? We don't have anything?
Nothing under old business.
Okay. New business?
Yeah, new business. SPR number 1927, 210 Moody Road, application, site plan review for self-storage development, Topknot LLC applicant, owner, map 100, lot 0011, I-1 zone.
For the record, my name is Megan Hope. I'm an attorney with Alteran Pearson and Glastonbury. I'm here tonight with the applicant, JR Klisham. He's behind me and will be on hand to answer any questions that the commission have. I'm also here with Jim Sekachik. He's our professional engineer for the project. This is an application for a site plan review for a proposed self-storage use at 210 Moody Road. It's located in the I-1 zone. And our plan tonight is to do a complete presentation of the application. As you probably noticed in the staff report, there was no proposed motion. That was included. We are, we submitted responses to planning and engineering comments earlier today, so we do want to get feedback from the town engineer before we move forward to a vote. So my intent with the presentation tonight is to go through the whole presentation. If the commission has any questions or additional information that you'd like, it'd be great if you could provide that to the applicant. We will be coming back on March 14th, hopefully to tell the commission that there's no outstanding issues with the town engineer and that we'd be ready to proceed to a vote. So with that, I'll start going through my PowerPoint presentation, if that works. So before you, on the screen is an aerial map of the site. I've highlighted the site, which is lot three. It's located at the southwest corner of Moody Road, which is located to the top of the screen, and then Taylor Road, which is located to the right of the screen. It's a 5.2 acre site. And regarding uses in the area, we have commercial uses that are located to the northwest and south. This side of Taylor Road is all in the I-2, or I-1, sorry, zoning district. And then across the street from Taylor Road, that is a residentially zoned area, and those uses are single-family residential. You may remember this site as it was part of a re-subdivision application that this commission approved at the end, or the fall of 2023. I've highlighted those lots on the screen, but lot one was further to the west. That included wetlands. There's lot two, and then we're, of course, lot three, which is highlighted in red. The green crosshatching that you're seeing on the right side of the screen, the east side of the lot, that is a conservation restriction area. It's about 50 feet in width. That was placed on as part of the re-subdivision application, still is in effect and on the land records. But essentially, that's an area where we're not allowed to remove vegetation. There also is an existing barn that is in this area, I'm highlighting it right here. That also is within this conservation or open space restriction area, and we're not proposing any changes to that as well. This is the existing site plan. I'm going to turn it over to Jim at this point, so he can go through the different site and engineering features, and then I'll come back to run through the architecture.
For the record, my name is Jim Sekachik. I'm a professional engineer and a land surveyor and president of Kratzler Jones and Associates. And I have been working with this applicant, Connecticut Self-Storage and its lead, JR Klisham. And this is the 17th type self-storage facility that we have done in Connecticut. So we've kind of know a lot on what works for the sites and what works for our use. Let's see if I get this mouse to work. There we go. Now, in the upper corner of this site right over here, whoa.
What are you trying to do, sir?
That's okay. We have the office area right there. Does this, does this work?
It's not working.
Give it a second to warm up.
Does it? Thank you.
There you go.
So as you're coming down Moody Road, you will see the office, which we try to use a barn-like motif in order to fit in with the neighborhood. And of course, we have our business end, the self-storage units, which we like to keep nice and low and discreet, but just a little glimpse at the road so people recognize that they're there. We try to make our sites very friendly. Our target audience is the mother with kids who want to feel comfortable coming to the site. So that's, that's why we want to be on main roads. We want to, for people to see what it's like, so they're comfortable coming in. The old method of having self-storage at the end of cul-de-sacs in the back of industrial buildings, we find doesn't work with our target audience. So this is a fine site, and it's a type of site we like to develop. When we do our sites, we maintain a minimum of 30-foot travel aisles around the buildings. And it has a lot of features. The fire marshal likes it because the buildings are separated. Our clients like it because they can park close to their unit, yet not block others coming and going. And we try to maintain circular motion, avoid dead ends in that type of situation. These are all proposed to be one-story units with doors leading directly from the outside to the unit. There are no internal hallways or other type of things. They're, they're all directly accessible from the outside. And of course, you know, we follow all the due diligence, you know, we make sure our site is friendly, you know, we make sure we have adequate storm drainage, adequate retention, and all those customary things that we try to do to make ourselves good neighbors. The buffer over here next to the residential area has got a lot of vegetation there already. There was some discussion as to whether or not that should be enhanced, and it's our recommendation that that be left at the staff level. Let's go out there in July and see if there are any holes that need supplemental, and we would be happy to accept that as a condition. So it's pretty much a nice, straightforward application, and we think it fits the neighborhood. It's quiet, low traffic, you know, no pollution issues. We're connected to sewer, we're connected to the water, and it's purely storage. We don't allow people to, you know, to work on vehicles or anything like that. We don't allow people to start making cabinets in there. No, there's no electricity. Any light is just from the opening the overhead door. And our lease agreements are very particular in that we prohibit storage of anything that might be toxic. We, it's storage. That's it. That's our business. We love it, and we want to do it in Enfield.
I just wanted to, again, Megan Hope, for the record, run through a couple more of the slides. I'm going to skip through, these are all the site plan slides that you got in your packets. So again, Jim had talked about the renderings of what the site looks like. Again, the barn-like structure has the office on the first floor, and all the rectangular buildings are the storage buildings. You are seeing and surrendering the fence that we're proposing, which is along Moody Road. We have a fence that wraps around the rest of the premises. These are just the black and white flat elevations of the site that were included in your packets. I did want to just highlight the floor plan for a second. We did get a question from the assistant planner about that upper story of the barn. There are windows that are proposed there. And what you'd be looking in when you see those windows, so just to orient you, the top of the screen would be Moody Road. This is the front of the building that's facing the street. On the lower story, we have the office area in the front. On the upper story, it's basically going to be attic space in the rear, but we would have windows at the front, and you would look in and you would see a sample of the roll-up door. There's no actual storage, storage units up there, but it is a real window looking in, looking into that. I feel like it's best shown in this floor plan view of the second floor. This is some details on the typical self-storage units, which I think are probably better explained in the rendering that we just showed. And what I did want to go through quickly are the assistant planners, Mr. Davis's comments. I did provide a response to those comments, but wanted to talk through a few of those with the commission. The first has to do with the barn that's located on site. We did a question if we're proposing any new use to it, and we're not. We're just going to leave that barn, that existing barn that's closer to Taylor Road within that conservation reason, that's going to remain. So we're not proposing any new use to that. We do understand if in the future, we did want to do some type of use, we'd have to come back and get a modification for the permit, but that's not something that we're proposing at this time. We, we are, as Jim mentioned, we did want to talk a little bit about the landscape buffer. We are, I did include a few pictures along Taylor Road. We're required to have the 50-foot buffer in this area. There is quite a bit of mature vegetation within this area. So as Jim mentioned, we are willing to supplement it. I think the typical buffer that you include with these applications is shrubs, deciduous trees, evergreen trees. It seems like that might not be the best approach here. I think shrubs might not have a big impact for screening, but we're definitely willing to put in some trees, maybe in specific areas. We think that a site walk in the summertime with staff where we can indicate where those areas might be would be a good idea, and we're open to that as some type of condition of approval. There was a couple other questions we had from staff, and I'll just go through those quickly. Again, as Jim mentioned, we don't permit any outdoor car storage on site if customers do want to store a car inside, that is allowed, but we don't allow any, anyone to work on, on their car within those units. We don't have electricity, there's no floor drain, so it's really not something that would be encouraged by our use. We do recognize that we need to come back for a separate sign permit, which we will do, following any approval that we get from the commission. We do have a moving truck that's located on site. It's a complimentary-type amenity. It would be parked in the front of the office during the day. If a customer came in to rent a unit, they could leave their car there, take the truck to their house or apartment, put belongings in it, bring it to the storage unit and put them, put it within the unit. But it's not, it's not going to, I think sometimes you see self- But it's not, it's not going to, I think sometimes you see self-storage facilities that have like all the Penske trucks or something like that. It's not going to be like that. It would just be a complimentary amenity for anyone moving into the storage unit. We did get reports back from the various departments indicating no concerns. That included the health department had no concern, the WPCA had no concern, police no concern, fire no concern, and the building had no concerns that would affect the P and Z, but obviously indicated that they would do a full review when building permits were submitted to the building department. So at this point, we really are waiting to just wrap up the comments from the engineering department, which we expect to have done before your next meeting in March. So I think that wraps up our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions, talk about the landscape buffer further if you have any more questions. And I'll exit out of the presentation so you can see.
Hmm.
Do you want me to exit out of the presentation?
No, I don't.
No, leave it here. Okay.
Quick question. Comments from staff?
Sure. Just real quick, go through some of the particular items. First of all, it's been a pleasure to work with the team here. It's been a long haul, I know. We had to go through the subdivision process and resolve some issues through that to get you situated so that we could kind of move this piece forward. So we appreciate your patience and hanging in there so we could get this to the finish line. So in terms of the buffer, supplements or no supplements, you do have to approve the modification to use the existing vegetation to satisfy that buffer requirement. I don't think staff has any issue with working with the applicants post-approval. We would like a little bit of direction or consensus from the commission in terms of, do they think any supplements are necessary or not? If so, kind of where? I would note that the conservation restriction does allow topknot to maintain the grassed areas that are right around the barn. I think we handed out a copy of that particular section, and we actually copied the first couple of pages of that conservation restriction for you so you had that in front of you. He also has the right topknot to use the barn for his own personal storage, non-commercial personal storage. Whether he chooses to do that or not is really of no interest to us, but we did put that limitation in the restriction. So it's up to these two parties to decide, you know, how they want to work that out. And we don't have any particulars one way or another on that. The conservation markers are in. I did go out today and check that. I apologize. I wasn't sure whether they were in or not. So that whole conservation restriction area is marked per the subdivision approval. Those are already in. So confirm that. Car storage, we did get a note from the fire marshal today on the open, the open gov system, and he said, quote, "After reviewing the codes, it appears that the proposed storage buildings are, due to their size, do not present any issues or concerns," unquote. So again, we don't have any issues with that. We just, A, wanted to make sure that that part was okay because we don't want issues down the road post-approval. But we also, I think, always want you to understand what you're approving. You know, so everything is out front. It's on the record. We all understand going forward, three years from now, Rick Rochelli's gone and retired, and there's some other CEO there, and we don't want to have any, you know, questions down the road. The truck rental, we understand it's going to be one, one vehicle, that it's, basically it's a branded vehicle. It's the business's vehicle. It probably says, you know, Connecticut Storage on the side of it or whatever it says. Perfectly fine with that. No issues, no concerns, as long as you guys are okay with it. And again, that's just wanting you to know what's going on. Signage, yeah, separate permit, always a separate permit. It took us a while to understand the second story, looking at the floor plans to interpret what, what exactly that is. Now we fully understand. I think between now and the 14th, what we might do is we might talk to the zoning officer just to get a confirmation from him that, you know, what we have here isn't some type of like commercial advertising type of a thing. I understand, I have no personal issues, you know, with it at all, but I think we want to make sure that it fits within the four squares of, of what the zoning code says as far as signage, just maybe for the future when we get additional applications of that sort. Engineering review will be done between now and the 14th. We'll get revised plans. They've already submitted their response. We've started to look at the response. So I think that's easy to wrap up between now and the 14th. Let me see if there's anything additional. I think we got everything. Buffer, yes, it's pretty much the buffer, you know. What's your others? What do you think you want to do or not do? And we'll be back on the 14th. Lori will be back on the 14th.
Okay. Just, I have a couple of quick questions. On the barn that's there now, what type of maintenance is going to be done there? And is it really going to be used? Because if it's not, it's going to fall apart. You can't just leave a vacant building. And I'm concerned about that because that barn's been there. I mean, people know it, know the street by it, people across the street. And the other thing I'm concerned, and it's just my concern, about storing cars inside. And I heard you, Matt, and we say, okay, there's no electricity except the light in there. Well, I'll tell you what. I can work on my car all day without having to plug anything in. I have battery-operated tools. So how, my question becomes, and how do we police that there's no work being done on cars? And I don't know that it's a big deal, but it's a concern.
And just quick, before my client comes up, I did want to mention, there is no electricity inside at all, the, the units. So there's no lights, and there's no outlets either. I know you're saying battery tools, which I understand. We have lights exterior to the units for nighttime. JR, do you want to come up and just introduce yourself for the record, and then, do you want to give them that, explain how you sort of police that issue?
JR Klisham, managing member of Connecticut Self-Storage and Connecticut Self-Storage of Enfield LLC. So when it comes to, you know, cars, again, just to repeat, no floor drains, no lights, no electrical outlets in any of our units. We have our operating, we have a manager there six days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Every day they start with a walk-around, they end with a walk-around every day. We recently sold some of our locations a couple of years back. We've had a whole bunch, and, you know, we don't allow outdoor storage. We don't allow anyone to work on their cars. We don't allow any, you know, anyone to play their guitar in a unit. So it's what we do, you know? And how do we police it? We just, we're there, we walk around. We also have cameras that cover pretty much every inch of the property. It could be accessed remotely from a phone. Most managers will look at that, too. And if someone's working on their, on their car, they, they have to, they, they don't, they have to stop. And also, you know, the percentage of units that will actually have a car, it's not very, not very much, especially the older it gets. Car storage is actually not really, it's sort of good for us at first because we're going to open up with a lot of empty spaces. We'll take, you know, what we can get. But over time, people will fill in with more, different things. So, you know, I can't guarantee 1,000% that some guy's not going to slide under his car, but if we see it, we'll stop it. And we're, we are there. We have, you know, again, the video cameras, and it's in the lease.
Okay.
Yeah.
And JR, while you're here, can you just talk about the maintenance of the barn a little bit?
Yeah. So the maintenance of the barn, we'll do, you know, whatever we kind of have to do. We, our plan is not to, not to change it, not to use it, but we're not, we, I will not let that barn fall down. We, once we get approved, I talked with Jeff a little bit. He's, he's done a little bit of work on it. We will do what has to be done as a condition to, you know, keep the barn standing. I know it's a, people in this town love it, and it's part of the reason why it's not the same thing, but we did a barn with a gambrel roof. I thought it was, you know, just to kind of tie things together. That was, that was the whole idea with that. We, I think the barn's a great, you know, we're the storage place by, I don't know, by that barn, so people will know that. It's got a nice little marker.
Okay. Those are just a couple of things that went through my mind.
And then as far as the maintaining, we could maintain the, whatever lawn care they were doing around the barn, we'll do the exact same thing. Just, we'll continue to maintain it. And then just, I think, I think you said in the approval, Jeff was, I don't think he's storing anything in there, but we will not, flat out, we will have nothing in there.
Yeah, the last, well, the first and last only time I went there with Jeff, he was nice enough to let us into the building, and I think there might have been one piece of, small piece of equipment or something in there, but it was completely cleaned out at that point, so.
Any questions from, go ahead, Benny?
Thank you, sir. Just two questions. One, Lot 2, when is that? Is there going to be something there? Is there, do you, I mean, do you own that? I'm asking for buffering reasons. My big thing is, is buffering that Taylor Road. No, I wouldn't ask you to plant bushes on that Taylor Road. You're planting, it would be trees. I would, that's, when we're talking buffering on that, because you do have residents right there. The barn, the building, the building is beautiful. The boxes are boxes, they're storage boxes. That, I would personally like to see that covered a little bit more from the road. As much, not all of it, as much as you can. That would, the smaller, listen, we've had berms put in with trees on it, and so do you, you know where I'm going with this? That's what I'd like to see.
Yes, I think what you're talking about would be, and Jim's going to walk over and point, but kind of that northern area of the side yard? Or are you talking more?
Correct. No, he's, he's got it that part and then down Taylor Road.
Yes. I thought we were taking advantage of the site topography there. What we're doing is we're putting in a retaining wall here that's approximately four to six feet high, and that hides the buildings which will be lower. And on top of that, we're going to have that black fence. The black fence that you can see right there. So in many ways, we are lucky that we have a site where we can use the grading of the site to create that type of berm that you're talking about to help keep those buildings, especially the ones that get closer to the residential area, discreet and behind both a retaining wall with the fence on top of it.
Quick question. How, how tall are them? I, I didn't get it exact. How tall are them buildings? 10 feet, 12 feet?
Nine feet.
They're nine feet. And then you're saying like a three or four-foot wall you're going to put across the front?
It's, it could be up to six feet, the wall.
A six-feet wall?
Yep.
And then the fence on top of the wall?
Yep.
Will there be any plantings there with that? Smaller ones, I'm not talking, I'm just.
Yeah, so I did.
To dress up the black chain link on the main road?
Yeah, do we have a landscape, we have a landscape plan, right? Here we go. It's, this really isn't helping.
Yeah, turn the colored one, please. The colored issue. Yeah, you could see there's some green space. I purposely kept, you know, a space. I'm guessing it's about eight feet or 10 feet.
We could put something.
From the paving to the sidewalk, and the retaining wall is right next to the paving, so we have space there.
Right.
Where we can, you know, do landscaping, plant street trees if you like, that type of thing.
And, and you got to understand why I'm saying this, is we do have other storage units in town that are on corners and on the road, and have full-blown trees, cherry blossoms, you could call them. I'm not a tree expert, but trees like that around. So we want to be, what we're due for one, we got to do for everybody, right? So I'm not asking for that, so to cover some of the boxes, the building itself is beautiful. Why wouldn't you want that to be seen from the road? But think of yourself as the neighbor. It's a box.
Yeah, so I just talked with my client. He's definitely said he's open to doing some landscaping there. So maybe on the 14th, we can come back with a supplemental plan, and it looks like you're kind of talking in front of buildings two, three, four, and five.
Yeah. And once again, I'm not telling you, I'm, you asked for, you know, suggestions.
No, it's helpful.
When you come back, this is what, I'm pretty much giving you the heads-up what I'm going to say that.
Right. Yeah, we can look, I think, to soften that view with some, some landscaping there, definitely.
Thank you. Thank you. Beautiful building.
Just one quick point, the fence along that road, oh, so sorry. Oh, sorry about that. And just one point of clarification, the fence along Moody Road, it's a black, it's a hollow core, hollow core aluminum fence. It's a nice fence. So, yeah.
Thank you. It looked like chain link from over there.
Yeah, no.
I know the difference.
Right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ken?
Yeah, I had a question, concern about the second floor. And I think it was, it might have been taken care of already, but I'm concerned that there would be some garish-looking advertising in those windows.
Sure. Yeah, I think that was kind of, was Matt's question. We're not proposing any signage up there at all. So, and if you wanted to put that as a condition of approval, we don't have an issue with that. We're going to have a, you know, road sign, monument sign, but we're not putting anything in that, in that window.
And also, do you think there's any future plans for doing something on the second floor of that building?
Is this, this is working? We have, no, we will not do that, the second floor of that building, it's not, it's unconditioned attic space. That's what it is. The whole, we've done different designs, but having the office with, I think it's a nice-looking building. You know, we try to draw attention to that. That's our, the face of the property, so giving it some size, some height, and we have, that's, that's the whole idea, and just, that's just part of the design. There, I mean, you could put a condition, we, I don't want to put anything on there. There'll be no, like, you know, display sign in the window like at a, like a store. We wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. Nothing like that. We will have a sign on the road, and that's all we need.
Okay. And then the last thing is, there were several items mentioned by engineering, and I think you may have referenced them, but you're going to, you're going to go through each one of those eventually, and.
Correct. Yes, yeah.
Or catch basin sizes and things of that nature. We're all in there, and quite a few, like four or five of them. And so you'll, you'll take care of all that.
Correct. Yes, we hope to come back on the 14th with those all resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I've got a question. I guess with respect to the landscaping plan, what I'm seeing here is, other than the colored sheet, which is marked, which one is that? S1? Is there, is, there's not really a detailed landscape plan, is that correct?
S4, right, Jim?
Yes, it would be S4.
I don't see a planting schedule or anything anywhere.
There is a sheet, S4, which is entitled, Lot 3 Erosion Control and Landscaping Plan, which shows the graphics of where plantings would be, and on the detail sheet separate, I believe it's sheet D1, the schedule of the trees and shrubs to be planted with sizes.
S4.
And when you look at S4, currently the landscaping is located adjacent to the parking spaces in front of the office building, so that could be why you're not seeing it. It's really just in that northwest corner of the site.
I see S3, I'm not seeing S4.
Next sheet?
And with, with respect to.
What's that?
With respect to the buffer, the 50-foot buffer, that would be on Taylor Road. Right now, the, for our consideration, I guess this is a question for staff through the chair, either, I guess there's a couple of options, accept the existing buffer plantings that are there, or do some sort of a hybrid with, which would be the B buffer yard, and or, or put that in and scrub everything that's there as well. So is that something that you want us to render some sort of an opinion on now, or?
Yeah, I don't think we need to get into like real specific detail. I think the idea for tonight was just to get a sense of whether you think it's necessary to supplement what's there, then we can work with them on that. there, then we can work with them on that. I mean, I was out there today. I've been out there a couple of times. I know it's seasonal to a degree. We're also trying to, oddly enough, we're trying to be sensitive to the neighbors across the street, some of whom have, it seems like a pretty nice view to the west and the sunsets, looking towards the Connecticut River. So I don't think we want to block those with 80-foot high, you know, evergreens and things. So hybrid, I think is a good way, John, to put it. I think it would probably be some combination of what's there right now, together with some supplemental, probably midsize evergreens. If you look at the Connecticut Water Company property, what they did in the front, they have some, I think it's spruce trees maybe there. So it might be, you know, you selectively kind of place some spruce trees to fill in some of the gaps over time. That kind of an approach. Unless you feel that what's there today is completely sufficient, you could certainly decide that as well. So it's just up to you.
Okay. All right. I guess, I see S4 on the plan sheets, but I can't seem to locate it on-
I didn't see it there on the big version.
What's on the, what's on my laptop. I'm just not, I'm just not seeing it. But I've got the plan version anyway, so.
And I, and I think counsel for the applicant is correct that really most of the landscaping now is decorative and it's oriented towards the, kind of the office.
So if you're looking kind of out there on the site, you're not finding it because it's not there?
I see it there. I'm not seeing anything really along the buffer area or the remainder of the frontage and so forth. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Linda?
To the chairman and to the staff, can we make sure that one of the conditions is there's no auctions held on the property? We did that with the last self-storage.
I don't think we addressed that specifically with the applicant. I'll let him respond.
Because we've done it with previous self-storages. So just to be consistent and-
Right. And the last, the last applicant, another one you're speaking of, that was, there was no attendant there. There was really-
Right.
It was kind of a self-service-
People leave things.
-concept. Yeah. So it might have been maybe, maybe a little different. I don't know. But I'll let the applicant respond.
Regarding auctions, there was a show years back called Storage Wars, which was completely fake. 100%. No one leaves, but anyway, that's a whole other story. I could talk separately. But, so there were in-person auctions. I've been in the business since the year 2000, and there were in-person auctions back then. Now, everything's done online. So we, and we know it's called a lien sale. Just the point, point of fact, whatever money we get, by the way, goes to cover what the tenant owes, any overage, which is rare, goes back to the tenant. Like in that show, they would pocket all this money. That's not how it works. But there's that. There's also, some places will have like a tag sale. We won't do that. I mean, that could be a condition, you know, no live auctions, no tag sales. We, again, we want to have a really nice looking place, you know, clean, friendly, convenient. That's our little tagline. And that's what we're shooting for. So, you know, no tag sales, no auctions, all the card discussion before, none of that. None of that. Really just a nice, quiet use. And as far as the landscaping stuff, sure. We want to have, we want it the front especially to look really nice. So that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Christian?
Yeah, I'd like to jump on the points about landscaping. I'm looking at a regulation, section 10 dot 10 dot 7, Parking Area Setbacks and Landscaping Standards. So we do have section A dot 4, Roman numeral 4, landscaped areas shall be planted with ground cover and one canopy tree for each 50 foot of frontage. So I do want, kind of want to tag on to what Commissioner Grillo had brought up in terms of frontage along, along the north side of the property. So that's, again, one canopy tree every 50 feet. I understand there's a fence there, as well as the retaining wall, but the landscaping regulation is there and for the sake of the community, I think that is preferred and obligatory here. Roman numeral 5 in that section does include about the sidewalks. So this may be kind of through the chair to the staff, because I know the staff's comments kind of were a little wishy-washy about kind of delaying a development of the sidewalks, or deferring, rather. As for our regulations, I see that as being part of this development. So I would, I would like to see that as part of this development. Sidewalks on Taylor Road, which were defined in the subdivision regulation, the subdivision application, but it's on this property being developed, Lot 3. So I guess that, through the chair to the staff, I guess, for staff to address.
So this is one of those situations where you have a distinction between a subdivision and a site plan. The sidewalk was a requirement of the subdivision. The subdivision has been recorded and the bond has been provided for the subdivision. So the subdivider, who is Topknot, has five years to complete the subdivision improvements. So I understand what you're saying, and I think just logically, you look at it and you think, well, this, the sidewalk should be done as part of this project, but it's really not part of the site plan. It's an off-site improvement associated with the subdivision. They can certainly negotiate privately and come up with some agreement if they choose to do so, but I don't think we can require them. They have five years to do the subdivision improvements. The one distinction I think that we did make, which is just operationally and functionally required, is as to the swale and the drainage. So they understand that while that, and we made accommodations in the subdivision design to provide for the rights and to some degree the obligation to make that improvement so that the drainage functions as Lot 3 is developed. Because otherwise, you know, you can't get to where it needs to go. So that's the only kind of exception, I would say. Would we like to see the sidewalk? Sure, we'd love to see the sidewalk, but I don't think it's something that we can encumber this site plan approval with. So, and then the trees, I just want to speak to that real quick. We struggle with how to interpret the landscape requirements in certain regards. This is not technically a, like a parking area. There is a drive around and that arguably is part of like a parking lot. It should be included as part of it. So I don't think they have any issue with providing, they've already said, you know, the landscaping along Moody on that side. And kudos to them for that. But we, as a staff level, that's something you may want to revisit when you're looking at your reg amendments, to put some clarity onto your landscape regs. So it's clear to both, you know, for their benefit, for our benefit, you know, for your benefit as well. So just wanted to make that, that point.
Right. I totally see. And I agree. I think that's something for us to take back for the future. And it's, that section of our regulations is parking area setbacks and landscaping requirements and kind of-
Right.
combines the two and jumps back and forth between them. There's definitely room for clarity there for-
Making a distinction between frontage and interior, because, you know, this is an industrial zone. And I think it's fair to say, maybe, up to you, that on the interior part of areas for industrial zones, it's not the same as an office park. It's not the same as, you know, Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, where you've got a different kind of clientele and different kinds of things going on in those areas. So I think a fair amount of work to be done on the landscape regs going, going forward.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I mean, I do, you know, I do think that the regulations are kind of definitely a tad vague there in determining whether they're, I mean, I see it as landscaped areas. It's not landscaped areas adjacent to parking, but that's my interpretation of it. But, you know, that's something we have to take back as, you know, as part of the zoning regs and, you know, as part of the POCD. You know, we want to require and encourage more street trees. But I'm glad, I appreciate the applicant being willing to work with us there. Like to see some canopy trees there. And, yeah, I definitely would like to see a more clarified, maybe a dedicated landscaping plan with the plantings. It's definitely kind of secondary by sentiment. Definitely very hard to tell kind of what's, what's on the plan, what's intended. And, you know, I'd like to see, you know, all the plantings required by our regulations. And then, you know, anything that you throw on as bonus, you know, we very much welcome, you know, for the aesthetics of the town and for future neighbors. So thanks for that.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay.
I got something, Mr. Chair.
I was just going to ask you, Frank.
Thank you. Again, I wanted to comment on the sidewalks. I know we've been requiring all the most recent applicants to do that, but it sounds like what Matt's saying in this case, we may have missed the boat. Statutorily, we can't have this particular application do the sidewalks, but I know we've been forcing sidewalks over the last four or five years on all our, on all our new subdivisions and approvals. So if we have to wait, I think, you know, we just approved that other lot. So next to it, Lot 1, I think, maybe we should have did it then, put a approval, a condition of approval on for sidewalks. I think I would have thought that, doing that if I known this was going to come as quick as it did. Because we don't want, you know, the sidewalks to nowhere anymore. And, you know, I was thinking the sidewalks would connect to, you know, hazard of water, which would be nice. But if you're saying we can't require it, I guess we can. The other thing was, I know on some of the questions with the cars, working on cars, would it be possible to provide us a copy of the lease when you come back, just so we can see what the, what your customers are reading and what they have to follow. And on the landscape, I think it might be a good idea to take the suggestion of waiting till summertime and going back out there and seeing exactly what's needed and plug in what's needed. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
And just, I was just told by my client that we are going to be installing the sidewalks. So we're, I agree with, with staff, we're not required to. You can't, I don't believe you can make an applicant put in a public improvement as part of a subdivision less than five years, because that's what's required by statutes. But as part of the deal between the seller and us as the contract purchaser, we are going to be installing the sidewalk.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Copy of the lease, is that possible for next meeting?
Yes, we can bring that to the next meeting. We'll try to put together packets, which I think sounds like it's going to be a supplemental standalone landscape plan sheet, the lease, and hopefully something from engineering department, seeing that we're all set with their comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. So we're going to leave this open until the next meeting?
Perfect. Yep.
So we won't be closing this up?
This is not a public hearing, it's just a site plan. So just table to the 14.
Okay.
Matt, one, could I turn to the chair to Matt for a second?
Yeah.
Matt, on the sidewalks, when we did the North Maple Street, a large warehouse, so what was the difference with that approval when we required them to sidewalks? Is it because it was a standalone application?
I think the distinction is subdivision versus site plan. You can require, you can require sidewalks, and you do, and you did, as part of the subdivision application. So the performance of that is incumbent upon the person who did the subdivision. And Topknot put up the bond, and the statutes provide that they have at least five years to complete the subdivision improvements. So this, this is a site plan in a lot within that subdivision. So I think the attorney's correct is that you can't require them, the site plan applicant to do what's required from, in this case, Topknot.
No, I just wanted to ask for clarification. A little bit, little bit confusing, and I really appreciate the applicant stepping up here and doing the sidewalks. I appreciate it. Thank you, Matt.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. We'll see you in March.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Thank you.
I don't know.
I think so.
All right. Do we need a motion to table this, or do we just let it sit?
Motion to table.
Okay.
Okay. I move to table this motion. Table, table, table the site plan review on Moody Road, Lot 14.
All those in favor? Hold on a second. All those in favor?
I did.
That's done. What's next? What's next? Let me see your agenda there. I got one buried here somewhere.
Other business.
Yep. Are there any other business to come before the committee commission?
Yeah.
Evidently not. All right. Okay, you got the list on the table, the two applications that we have for the next, next agenda?
Yes, that would be SPR 1932 at 525 Enfield Street, RD Oli Dodge, site plan modification to split the site into two phases to allow for occupancy prior to final completion. 525 Enfield Street LLC, applicant owner, MAP 33, Lot 263 to 267 in the BG zone. And SPR 1933, which is 7 Pearson Way, Simpson Strong Tie Site Plan modification from SPR 1915 to expand parking by 30 spaces shown as deferred under prior approval. Pearson Enfield Development Co., Inc., applicant owner, MAP 75, Lot 42, I-1 Zone. And that will be an admin approval. Since it's already approved, they're just actually going to build the deferred parking.
Okay. Any opportunities or unresolved issues? I don't believe we need an executive session, so I'll entertain-
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, all in favor, stand up. We're done.
Thank you.